Thank you. We will start with Public Works.
Morning. Our list is pretty short today, so at least from our, the things we have, it should go quick. Construction side, we have no consent agenda items. Construction Roosevelt grade road, no change. Small works guardrail project. We actually have a start date of the end of September 26th for that work to start, so that's good. Courtney Road, the contractors still removing hard rock, shaping embankments, installing culverts, dressing slopes and ditches on the upper section and then getting the lower section ready to pave. In fact, they, they are trying to scramble to pave next week, but I don't, that's really pushing it because they don't have a mixed design submitted and all the other things. So sometime in September, that's what we're hoping. They just have to get their things together. Annual striping program, it seems that it's challenging to get paint for the contractor, but. We're going to use Anna's Paint, which is what they typically use, is out till October 31st. We're like, okay, that won't work for us. We're not going to paint in snow or the possibility of snow or freezing and it doesn't. So there's another new brand out there that has the same quality and we should just bring that. As we're not paying more for it, we're okay with it. Okay, on the design side, and this is actually moving into construction, the Clickatatt path. So county crews are getting set up, we're ordering materials and they actually brushed it. The railroad grade last week and they're getting the equipment and stuff set up so they could actually build it. So work has started.
How much brushing was there?
Lot of, lot of blackberries.
Oh, okay, I guess, yeah.
We kind of pushed it back to got rid of the blackberries, careful of the trees, but the blackberries.
Okay.
Actually have a lot of trees along there.
Yeah.
The parking lots were also kind of regrouping on that and we will be paving and doing some of the concrete work here this fall as crews are freed up and able to do that. Rock Creek Bridge, still trying to wait for Wash Dot to give us some of our approvals that we submitted quite a while ago. And for that bridge painting project, Sundell Road and Old Highway Eight, starting to get our alignments and everything set up for that and start laying out the new road. Maintenance side.
Where you go for that? Remind me, when is the funding available for that? It's not until.
Next 24.
24. Thank you.
Maintenance projects, crews today are finishing up the last shot on the B S T on Old Mountain Road today. And I think that'll finish our oiling this, this year. So then they're also working on the Sadus Pass site and doing some grading. So still challenged over on the east end by Lund Hill with grading. And so they told me on Friday they would start today on their section. If they don't, then we will start and then we'll just bill them back. So one of the things that I know that Dan, you had concerns with about, you know, what's to stop them from just letting us do it? We, we, and tie up our crews, we can actually hire contractors to do that work as well. So if needed, it doesn't have to be our crews. We just have to kind of plan ahead if they stop.
Right. That, that's kind of one of my worries is if they have to hire a contractor and say it costs $100,000 versus whether they just let us do it and then they get a bill for 80, that saves money. I want them to get a bill for 120. I want them to handle it themselves or be punished for not handling it themselves.
Yeah, it's, it's likely that it would cost more because we would, if we hire a contractor, it'd be the same price they would pay. Plus we'd have some kind of overhead that we'd also add in there for actually charge or getting somebody to do the work. So. But that's not really what we want to do. We want to have mechanisms to, yeah, make it work. And that's what we're working on for Bluebird.
Right.
And this is the roads that they'd agreed to, to fix, not the, not the one that we're having issues with. It's outside of it.
Yeah. Okay. And so, yeah, I am still working on putting together a, it's a row, under the road closure R C W to set a speed limit. And hopefully I'll have that for you on Tuesday to approve next Tuesday and then we can enact that, get the signs up and then let the sheriff enforce it. So that will help, I think, soon as word gets out. West End Cruise, Hall and Rock for today with the Pickleton guys to get Old Mountain complete. And then they're starting work on the trail as well. So that's their week's worth of work. On the facility side, talked about the parking lots. The HVAC system, we meet with the contractor tomorrow to discuss the solutions for the remaining few areas in this building. The guys started on the wireless bridge to Annex Four. They installed the microwave and made some of the connections and by this month they'll finish that and then we can get those cables that tie this building to the courthouse in Annex Four. Those will be wrecked out finally. And then we still are waiting till the end of the month, first of October to install those units at the Pioneer Center. And radio site. Let's see, electrical rough ends done. We're waiting for inspection. It's a little bit of a trip out there. So I bet Dave's supposed to go there this week. And then from there, we'll finish, the contractor, our guys will finish, finish the construction. And the road guys are up finishing up the main road today and tomorrow. And then it's just a matter of us waiting for the tower and things like that. So we already talked about Middle Road. So that's the end of our list today.
You guys are getting real fast.
Today it is, yeah.
Any questions for my seatmates?
No.
Nothing for me?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you gentlemen. Do you gentlemen have anything good for the order?
I'm going to pass my seatmate something for the order. Just photos, anybody cares.
Oh.
This is the photo thing. I'm hoping that you find some time to stick a sticky note on anything that.
I like or say absolutely not.
Well, the sticky note on the things that are okay, so we at least know the flavor.
Okay.
We're looking for.
Sure.
If we're looking for.
Uh.
Obviously the price.
The email. The email that was sent last week that had pictures. I like some of those.
These sticky notes are like yours?
No, the orange ones came with the book. The green ones are one of our employees.
Okay.
Yes.
That's the section that was missing.
Right. I like that.
Yep. That's what we, me and Gordy both liked more than what was in there.
Then everything in there.
Than just, yeah, picture of a building. So, yeah, in that book is, there's two sections that look exactly the same. And that's because they forgot to put that packet in there. I forgot to mention that. So you actually did like the industry in farming or at least some of the ones in there?
Yep. I did. Amazingly.
Did you see the logs? There was logs that were.
Oh, drilled?
Drilled to be pipe.
Yeah, the original pipe.
I was just having.
Were you looking at that one? I think that one was really fascinating. And it was on for Pipeline Road right out here. And that was the old water pipe coming off the hill. And I'm like, see now that's kind of neat. You can actually see how they've notched them out to plug together and.
Mm-hmm. Boy, could you imagine the amount of leak in that?
Do you need sticky notes down there, sir?
I will. Um, yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'll get my glasses on. Maybe just Whitney can jump right in.
Sure. Good morning. We'll start off with some natural resource updates. So starting in the world of salmon. Thank you for appointing our two most recent Citizens Review Committee members. That was on, I think, two weeks ago, the consent agenda. They've jumped right in and they're helping out already. We'll have another C R C appointment resolution coming before you soon. And this, this is to reappoint Kelly Clothier as Underwood Conservation District's representative on the Citizens Review Committee. The committee had a meeting last week and they supported the Mid Columbia Fisheries Enhancement Group's request for additional funding to, for the Lower Snyder Creek Restoration Project. So this is the project that goes through the Clickatatt Mill Site. And this was, this request is for funding to drill additional wells on the site so they have a better understanding of groundwater. So that request is now going to the state. They have to approve it ultimately. So we should know soon whether or not they receive that funding. So that brings us to the mill site in general and they will be requesting, if they get the funding, to drill two additional wells on the county property at that site, which we've discussed previously. We're coordinating with Public Works on that and we would have some type of landowner agreement with the fisheries group about drilling those wells. And that would include a financial commitment for them to decommission the wells in the future once the restoration planning phase for fish habitat is complete. That cover that?
Yep.
Okay. Then in other fish news, NOAA did release the five-year status review for Mid Columbia Steelhead, which are listed as threatened under the Endangered Species Act. There's no major change in their listing status. They're still at moderate risk of extinction over the next hundred years. So more of the same. There's continued focus on restoring and protecting tributary habitat, which is what we do through our, our salmon recovery process with the state. Also looking at increasing stream flow and reducing stream temperatures because those seem to be some of the major stressers for fish in our freshwater environment. They did include a new goal of protecting and enhancing thermal refugia. And we have several streams identified as thermal refuge streams, including the Clickatatt and the white salmon. So that's kind of a trend we're seeing across multiple different management plans now, state, federal and local with the gorge commission too, that focus on thermal refuge areas. It also calls for maintaining fish monitoring, which we're doing on all three of our major basins here, and then identifying ways to contribute to increase stream flow because that seems to be an ongoing topic as well, just maintaining flows in order to maintain temperature for fish in our watersheds.
Yeah. I'd say probably the, the two big things to keep an eye on I saw in this that are relatively new. You may recall a couple of years ago, there was a, some litigation on the west side relative to FEMA and its flood insurance program. Building and flood plan, whether or not they could qualify for flood insurance required them consult with National Marine Fisheries Service, a Section Seven consultation. This status review, a couple of places mentioned that floodplain insurance program. So I, I suspect there's going to be or anticipate some initiative to try to move that focus on, you know, the flood insurance program impacts to the east side. Clickatatt County is not, we're not going to be like Yakima County, which would have a lot of floodplain issues, but. So that's one. And the other, of course, is the thermal refuge area. That's, that's going to be interesting as it unfolds in the future.
What are they trying to do or change with the thermal refuge area?
Protect and enhance. So.
Protect and enhance for habitat and whatnot?
The cold water refuge area. Can you increase it, make it colder? Potential impacts or initiatives to, you know, come up with in-stream flow rules for our, our rivers while, you know, they're they're nice and cool, you know, might want more water. I think most of the area, most of it now sort of focusing on can they increase the, you know, habitat area at the mouth, maybe some dredging or something like that. But.
A lot of it's also supporting the purchase of water rights to put it back in-stream. So that you have more cold water.
Okay.
Yeah. So. So what's, for, for all those people with, with streams with real temperature problems, you know, they have this to look forward to. Once they get them cooled down, then restrictions will get tighter because they want to protect the higher quality habitats. Anyway. Go, why editorialize some more?
Okay. So moving now on to the SimCo Coordinated Resource Management Plan for, well, W D F W acquired lands east of 97. The first update is that that acreage is now, is now at its final size. Earlier this year, W D F W was trying to acquire a couple more parcels from W P T, but their bid was rejected. So I don't have the total acreage currently. I need to plug it into G I S to get that number, but it won't be expanding any more than it currently is.
Really? So did they, did, did W P T sell those parcels to somebody else then?
I believe so. Yep. Apparently it happened very fast. So W D F W was surprised by it, but it went pretty quick.
Do we have an order?
I don't, I didn't look up the specific parcels. No. And then in terms of how the coordinated resource management plan process is going, the central and eastern Clickatatt Conservation Districts are still negotiating with W D F W regarding grazing and timber rights. So no update has, has to share there aside from they're still in negotiations. But until that decision is settled, the conservation district staff haven't been participating in the meetings. They just don't have, can't commit the staff time until the management question is settled. So the C R M process is, is limping along, I guess, in their absence. It's, there's still representatives from the county because I've been going and Yakima Nation is there as well and some private landowners. But it isn't quite as robust as it would be if they were, if the conservation districts were fully participating. So what we're doing at those meetings is finalizing the management plan for that acreage. And then once the, the chapters of that plan have been finalized, there will be several public meetings where people can gather or learn about the plan and give additional input. And that input will be incorporated before the plan even goes through C I P A. So there's a lot more outreach to come.
So what, in the current, the, the plan is it's being developed absent the conservation district's robust involvement. Are grazing and timber, is that in the plan? Is there, so it's, it's not just omitted?
No. There's a forestry and there's a grazing chapter within the plan. And for each of those chapters, initially there was quite a bit of discussion as, between the districts and W D F W for what direction it would take. So they've reviewed some of it, but they aren't in the room for the final decision, I guess. Yeah. So we're hoping they come to some sort of agreement soon because obviously their participation would be valued and they're an adjacent landowner. They do own acreage adjacent to the, the W D F W property. So for those public meetings to review the plan before it goes through C I P A, there'll be one in Goldendale, one in Toppenish, and then possibly one virtual open house. So it's a chance for the public to learn about the plan and hopefully address issues before it goes through C I P A. That's it on SimCo. For the other conservation district in the county, Underwood Conservation District is gathering input from stakeholders on their long-range plan for what they'll be doing for the coming years. So I believe they'll be reaching out to Commissioner Anderson and Commissioner Soder some, to have a meeting sometime in the next coming month to discuss how they could strengthen their programs or if there are unmet needs in the county that they could help address. And they'll also be meeting with our staff independently.
So we will be coming in the next, so.
Yep. And then last on my list, our community wildfire defense grants. So Mount Adams Resource Stewards, based out of Glenwood, they'll be submitting a proposal on October 7th for fuels reduction work in Western Clickatatt County. I've been talking with them throughout the year as well as with Underwood Conservation District and D N R. So it's kind of just a continued conversation and now hopefully getting some funding to do fuels reduction work. But they're hosting a stakeholder planning meeting this week, September 8th in Housam. And both Frank from Emergency Management and I will be attending from the county side. So there are several projects identified in the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. So we're assuming it'll be something related to those projects. But it's kind of a brainstorm between a lot of partners and D N R as to what, what we could fund on the west, west half of the county.
Do you know, are they including Forest Service in any of that?
Yeah, I think they're looped in. This particular grant can't be used for federal lands. It can only be used for state, local or private. So. But yeah, they are involved in the coordination because the Forest Service is also doing a lot of work adjacent to Clickatatt County, especially behind the, the Buck Creek drainage over in Skamania. Yep.
Yeah. They also received, Forest Service received a pretty significant grant for fuels reduction work too, which I have yet to see any actual on-the-ground reduction of fuels. I think they're still planning. So.
Yeah.
It's a long process.
It's a long process. The, the, the part that concerns me is sometimes the process takes so long, the problem doesn't exist anymore because it was solved a different way. Meaning the fire just comes through and it's like, oh yeah, all that planning work, never mind.
Yeah.
It's all out the window and all the good stuff too.
I have seen the Forest Service doing a lot of really large fuel breaks along roads and on ridge lengths.
Okay, good. So hopefully they are.
All the way from here to Idaho.
Yeah, they are, they are trying. And I think collectively everyone is trying to take that more landscape scape approach or lands, yeah, size approach because fire does not appreciate boundaries.
Yeah.
It just burns through it all. So, yeah, landscape scale is what we're looking for here. And hopefully this, this grant pool can help us do some more work locally.
Okay.
And the only other thing I got to add to natural resources, hopefully we'll have a letter for the tribes to try to initiate some conversations relative to Swizzler Canyon to use. So the lead agencies will be signing that letter. And that's it. Unless you've got questions on natural resources.
You're not going to call Swizzler Canyon a pump storage, are you?
I actually got some good press in Seattle Times, you know, fairly good.
Swizzler did?
Yeah. Not Swizzler.
No.
Pump storage.
Pump storage project, yeah. It was practical, realizing that that's a potentially very important project in terms of energy transition. All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Ed.
So for the month of August, we had a number of things that came up with the Columbia Gorge Regional Airport with the federal E D A. A lot of very last minute things. We were able to get all of those things accomplished and we sent everything in. And so from my understanding, they sent me an email saying that I'm good on my side and we're waiting for legal to come back with the award letter. So they're trying to get that pushed out this month. And so that's very important for them. And so right now we're just on standby once again. So. Moving forward, the Small Business Innovation Fund grant, that's through Washington State. If I'm not mistaken, you wrote a letter of support for the Chamber in the, in the city of Goldendale. And then I put, I also put an application in for Clickatatt County for $500,000 for the architectural and engineering for that same project down there at the airport. And that was submitted by Friday. Moving forward, I've continued to meet and work with Pat, the city, the new city administrator of Goldendale on what some of the projects that they're looking at. This last week, Nicole from the Chamber, she did a lot of work in regards of partnering up with Pat and getting a lot of that stuff put together for their grant. And then how do we move forward in the, in the number of those different projects that, that Goldendale's looking at? Working Washington Five, that deadline is going to be this Friday, September 9th by 5:00 P M. So we, we have had a few people reach out and I'm going to continue reaching back out to those folks this week to make sure as many people as we can can get, apply for those funds. And then workforce development, we're still working with Clark College or, yeah, Clark College on what some options might be for the region. Especially in regards to the job skills program and stuff like that, seeing, seeing what options we can utilize for business development here in the county. For startups, we have another restaurant in Goldendale that's going to be coming on in over there at Bake, over at the old Bake My Day Restaurant. So it's going to be an Italian restaurant. Dave Vanzos, they've got the, I think it's Dave Vanzos. I just, I just met them. But they have the, the public notice meeting and everything like that up on my window. So they're already moving forward with the renovations and everything. So that's pretty exciting. And they're also hooked up into, into a number of the resources we have here at the county. And then community development project funds. The tree trimming with the cemetery district number one, they met a couple of weeks ago, their board, and approved the, the suggestion from K C P I D A to, to move ahead with a $5,000 that they would put in. And then, and then a match from the county with the community development project funds of $10,000. And that contract, that memorandum of, of understanding will be on your guys' desk next Tuesday. So.
Wasn't a 50-50 match?
It was a two-to-one match.
See, I remembered it was a 50-50 too. So I could be wrong. But that's, when you said it, it surprised me.
I thought it was up to $10,000, two-to-one, is what I've written down in my notes.
Yeah, they were supposed to put in the two.
Yeah.
I, I thought it was 50-50.
We can go back.
Transposed them again, dude.
Yeah. If you could go back and check those notes to make sure we're doing what the board did agree on.
Okay. And so outside of that, we're still looking at possible.
Because it was a $30,000 project, right?
It was a $22,000 project.
Yeah, they wanted 22.
They were, yeah, they were, they had $580 in, in match that they'd been able to put together. And so.
I thought the way it was worded was we'll go as high as this number, but we're matching your number. So if they put in five, we put in five. If they put in 10, we put in 10. Not a two-to-one, but a, an actual 50-50 match up to that.
$10,000.
That's what I remember it being. But like I said, I could, that was long enough ago.
Yeah. That sounds right, that the match, we would match dollar for dollar up to $10,000. But go back and check because again, that was a month ago.
Say there's one good thing for recordings, I guess, is you can see a recording, but that one I don't think is recorded. It's not recorded? Did we record K C P I D A meeting?
We didn't.
Yeah.
No, we brought, we, we were Zoom, we were Zooming.
Yeah.
Because we had some folks were on Zoom.
Right. But just because we Zoomed doesn't mean it's recorded. So I didn't know if it recorded. So, I don't know.
Verify that.
Okay. I'll do that this week.
And then that's, that's pretty much it. So.
Yeah. But they, what I've got to add for the economic development. We submitted comments, that's the county, K C P I D A and then myself on the draft environmental impact statement for the pump storage project. There was a now open and opportunity, comment on the application for 401's water quality certification, which is the reason the E I S was being done. That deadline was today. It's been extended to the end of the month. So I'll be bringing, you know, we'll ghostwrite some letters supporting that for you and have them to you for your consideration. The other thing, I guess, you know, we've had since the last meeting, I've responded to one public records request from C I S and we've got a. And we've got another one in the works, now relative to daycare, thank you. So we'll be working on that, on that.
It was by C S relative to daycare?
No, it was someone else, C S is, we we addressed their questions, I believe.
I think I know which one you're talking about.
How do we, just this is more a question for everybody, I guess, how are we tracking our? Our time and resources as far as to meet those public records requests, I mean, all public records requests. Cause we do have a, cause there is a, there is a threshold that if we expend more than, I think it's a hundred thousand dollars in a, in a year. In a budget year, we have to report. Or detailed information to the state. And we have been certifying that we're not, that we're under that threshold and I. I just am concerned that given the volume of records requests this last year. That, and I, you know, I don't know how we even track that.
I I know time that I spend on it, I haven't been as diligent as I could be, I'm trying to be. But I I do note the time, like the the C S one was, I think nine or ten hours. This weekend I did like seven on the the latest one. So we'll see, and then staff is tracking their time.
Well, and that brings up a valid question, it's like the daycare one I saw, it it was very generic. Give me every document that talks about daycare. Well, what's the date range, what's the time range, are we going back seven years on this or, you know? I really think we need to hit them back with what exactly are you looking for? So that we can save our staff twenty hours of work and and give you. That that every time we get one is, don't just say, okay, we'll get it to you, it's like what, you know, get back to them and and dig into it. Cause I I honestly don't think the majority of these people realize that one little question about childcare is costing, you know, forty hours. When you think of everybody, digging through there to give you the information that.
Are we looking for some, are we looking for ever scrap a pe- piece of paper that has something to do with that topic?
Going back seven years, or are you really just looking for an answer that maybe can be facilitated in a phone call?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, or a couple of documents written rather than, you know, every email that's happened in the last twenty years.
Because same deal, we're all gonna, you know, sure, I got the childcare study from W A G A. I'm sure you guys got it too.
Yeah.
And he's got it and he's got it and then they're gonna get it seventy four times because they're getting documents from seventy four different people. So I don't know. I'm gonna have to get my blood pressure cut out.
Just how do you, how do you narrow down, cause a lot, sometimes they're looking for information that can be solved in a couple of documents. Okay.
Continuing on.
That's it.
That's it, wow, any questions from my seatmate?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, looking at the agenda today, it was, it was gonna be short and sweet.
I don't have a problem with that. Alright, there it is. Next up, Code Compliance Officer, George.
Good morning. You got skipped.
I'll also try to keep mine short.
Yeah, always make sure you bring.
Yeah, sorry.
At least one copy if there's two people, two copies.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, yeah. Uh, so this will be my second update to the commissioners since I took on the county code compliance officer role. As of this day, I have twenty seven active cases, I have opened five new cases for August. Closed three and forwarded or dismissed three recent reports. Community outreach has been an emphasis since I took on the role. Attending local events to familiarize the public with who I am and what my department entails is a necessity in my opinion. For the month of August, I opened up a Facebook page titled Click Attack County Code Compliance to keep up with modern times. In its short life, it's received some traction without too much effort. As of now, I've added the basics to the page, but I will strive to use the platform to educate and inform the public of Click Attack County. Regarding my ongoing cases, I have to do some, I had to do some paper service on the following properties. And they're all the ones listed below. Paper s- service is usually my last resort, it's an attempt to contact the property owners. As walking into the property has elevated risk. I'm happy to report that contact was made with all the property owners and the contact information was exchanged with the listed properties. Compliance with all cases is slow moving, keeping that in mind, the following cases are moving towards compliance. One for, one four two Main Street in Wishram. Cleanup is almost complete, the second site inspection showed massive improvements. With the tenants showing a willingness to reach compliance. I project this case will be closed by the end of the month. Follow, follow up is due at the fifteenth of this month. A request to commissioners, as of now, I'm driving a two thousand twelve Ford Escape great vehicle. Except not for my current use, that my issues are based off of office officer safety and its capabilities. Most of my complaints are in rural areas with primitive roads. While the Escape handles these roads well, it does, does not complete each visit without a couple of hard bangs and pops. For me, it's frustrating, especially knowing that something with higher ground clearance could easily make these trails without the. Any of those bumps or bangs. Also because of the ga- legalities, most of my inspections are done from the easement, usually from the side of the main road. My current vehicle does not any, have any form of signaling besides its hazards. I consider my work much like utility, public works or law enforcement. Anyone standing on the side of the road should have a vehicle equipped with flashing amber lights for personal safety. Especially considered, considering for each case, I usually visit and document the progress a minimum of three times. Ultimately, what I'm requesting is they pick up a surplus from another department. I have submitted this request informally to other departments, which refer me to you for permission. And that concludes my update, I was also gone from August twenty sixth to today, so I've missed out.
I understand the pickup. There may potentially be a pickup, I can think of a couple, so. As we go through the year and the budget process, we will see if one becomes available.
And then you're setting your flashers on right now when you're on the side of the road?
Usually I try to set up my vehicle far down the road and. I I throw on a vest and then I, that's pretty much as as good as it gets right now.
Park where you can, cause it's safe, throw on a vest and puff it back to where you need to go to look.
Which you'd probably do anyways, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm doing right now, what I would like to do is is. Much like Commissioner Christopher was saying, um, there's a lot of, I see a lot of like surplus trucks around the county that aren't being used. Like old public works trucks or something, you know, I'm not asking for anything new or anything. What I would like to do is set my truck, you know, give myself a buffer in case someone is, doesn't see me or.
I think you're talking of setting it up more kind of like what the litter crew truck is. Amber lights overhead that you can flip on when you stop to get traffic to slow and then along with your hazards.
Yeah, August was. Yeah, paper service took up a lot of time for August, I usually don't like to do paper service. It's really dangerous, in my opinion. If the property owner doesn't know you're coming, it usually puts me in really awkward situations. Twenty four Brens Way was actually a pretty good example, I was, I went down there. I said hi to one of the property owners, turns out he is a wanted felon on like multiple firearm charges. I didn't know who this guy was, but apparently he's a, so.
See, that's the one thing where I would recommend you do the same. Limb, when he had to go out and do things like that or go to a house, he would always call it in or check it on the database to see who he's dealing with. What's potentially here, so that way he knew he could call an escort.
Yeah.
If he needed one, so yeah, you need to know what you're walking into.
Which I usually do, but I mean, you know, you, at the end of the day, you never truly know who's gonna be on the property. Just, yeah. Most of the properties though, I do, I do let dispatch know where I am. And if I do get a, just, you know, a gut feeling, I ask for another deputy, they usually make fun of me. Cause like, you can't do this by yourself. I don't have all the gadgets you guys have, you know, the bulletproof vest and all that, so. Do you guys have any questions about the, any of the cases listed?
What are you doing with these? Code, R V, no permit, motor home, I'm guessing it's either manufactured home or manufactured home, no permit. What is your, your direction that you're shooting with the code revision or code R V no permit?
Usually I'm, I'm, uh. Usually the R V violations are sewage, water and waste. Is usually my. The reasons why is I I open them, there's a lot of cases that I'll get that will just be, just because of the R V. Usually I don't pursue. R Vs unless. Unless the sewage and water isn't being taken care of. I think we're all under the understanding that we don't wanna evict people or make people homeless. And R Vs right now are a pretty hot commodity. Two of my, my two new cases are actually like really primitive living, which also. I guess while I have you guys in front of me, I should ask what directive you guys want me to take.
What do you mean by primitive living?
Tents, one is a, an actual yurt and the other one is just a tent.
So they own the land, is there a house or a structure on the land? They own the land, they're just camping on their own land indefinitely or?
But they own it?
Yes.
So it's not a structure?
Well, a yurt, the building department's gonna say if it doesn't have a permanent foundation, blah, 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 blah. The tent, I don't know that you can do anything about that, but the yurt, yeah, you gotta have a permanent permitted foundation, blah, 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 blah.
Yurts are becoming really popular in the county, I see them everywhere.
And most of them are not permanent.
Yeah, three, three are, yeah, three I've received complaints for, but I see them popping up everywhere. Throughout the county, so.
So what, as far as the folks in the tent, what are they doing for water and sewer wastewater?
From my understanding, uh.
Because that for me is, that's usually the hook as far as the.
So water, he's bringing it offsite allegedly, I did see. The containers for water, he had a lot of them, so I I do believe he's bringing water from offsite. Sewage, he claims he's just digging a hole and burying it. I did talk to the health department about it and they're not very fond of the idea. They did say that, you know, ultimately the. It's a low concern, it's, it is one person.
Right.
I mean, it's, there's no rivers, there's no. But at the end of the day, it's.
Hey, if they're not concerned in the sidewalks of Portland, why are we concerned with somebody that's on there?
On their own property?
Yeah, out in the middle of Timbuktu.
Yeah, this guy's, every interaction I make with this individual, I have to drive up there. I mean, we're talking primitive living.
Is he calm and civil and?
He wasn't fond of me being on the property, but I think that really goes with every, anybody I walk into.
I wouldn't be either, so yeah.
No one's ever, yeah.
I don't know, at this point with with that gentleman. You know, I guess I'd say at least he's burying it. Deer don't bury it, bear don't bury it, elk don't bury it. When I'm hunting in the woods, I don't bury it.
Yeah, so I had another, another one on this, on the same, it was on Thompson Trail. They also, they're essentially doing the same thing, but really I closed that case solely on the fact that they were camping on it. They were only doing it.
See, this guy, would I feel much better if he dug a big pit? Used the same spot like an outhouse. Buried it deeper than what I think he might be digging individual digs for, absolutely, I think that's more healthy, but.
Yeah, I would say for me, barring some evidence of an actual health issue, I mean. I certainly don't wanna encourage it, but I think if somebody wants to live on a tent on their land and they're not. Their impact of them living there isn't spreading beyond their property and there's no real evidence of that, then why do I care?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm kinda curious why, I mean, obviously you would need, you are investigating because somebody turned them in and.
But is that code or is that nuisance?
That's neighbor doesn't like it. I should have moved into an H O A so I can complain about my neighbor. Yeah, I I I wish the guy had an outhouse or a better scenario and maybe educate in that form, but then I, if it was me, I would say have a nice day and.
Yeah, get the education, see if you can get some sort of educational materials on outhouses. That we use out in Forest Service playground or whatever and then hand that to him and close the case.
Okay.
I mean, this is what it's about, is education.
That's that's kinda where I'm at, so that's how I'd say, print something out of an outhouse, how to build a hole this deep, whatever. Side us, you know. Hand it to him and and say, just keep yourself clean and we're, we're good.
Tents don't handle.
Yeah, they don't hold up to stand in the snow real well, but.
He seems to enjoy it, so more power to him.
If he's not causing trouble with the, then again, it's a, it's not the lifestyle I would choose if I didn't have to, but. You know.
I can't fault the guy, I just, I just came back from Montana and I was doing the exact same thing, so.
Most people pay to do that?
Yeah, I was paying to do it.
You go out of state, you pay and do it for a week and that's awesome, but God forbid you do it for two weeks on your own property or a month on your own property. Or, and as I said, I can't, other than the outhouse thing and I wish he would. Uh, improve the quality of his disposal, but I can't make him, but I can just request it and and hand him some information he may not have. That's right, yeah, I agree.
As for the yurts, you know, the yurts are something that we haven't, we've talked about over and over and over and over again, but we haven't truly dealt with. And that's we need to with building because they're gonna continue to get more. I mean, the price of building anymore, I don't know why, you know. You try to try to buy the property and then live there while you build your house, now you can't even afford to build your garage to live over. Live atop, prices are so expensive.
Um, I've also been, uh, well, I've been researching other counties for comparables and uh. I want to. Hopefully do everything by Zoom, but um, I wanna reach out to code compliance officers within comparable counties. And really bounce ideas on what we can do to improve our current codes and establish fines that I can present to you guys. And sh- just show what other counties are doing and kind of, I mean, go from there. We don't have very much comparables, though. Very unique. Large county.
No, you'd think there'd be Chelan, Douglas, Kittattas.
Kittattas is almost double our population. Chelan is, I think, a lot more. So I think it's Adams. I can't, off the top of my head, I can't.
Yeah, I think that's what you're gonna have to do is contact them and say, send me over your. Your code on code compliance and, and kinda go through them and see which ones. Look complete or which ones look incomplete and, and do we just kinda go from there and take pieces from what we want and where?
But that'll be for next month's update. This month was a little short, I was not in my office as much as I wanted to be.
Well, we hope after budget season, we'll have time to sit down and fix some of these. Issues.
Mediation services and code compliance. Cause half of the time it's neighbor versus neighbor and so there's mediation.
Yes.
Interesting.
Yeah, I've noticed a lot, a lot, a lot of my complaints are usually neighbor disputes that turn into just bickering.
Using us as a weapon, which I don't like. That's always my first question. Have you talked to your neighbors?
No.
Let's go talk to them. And just see. Maybe they don't know. You're really pissing them off. I didn't know, okay, I'll, you know.
They don't like it when I shoot my guns and fireworks off at midnight?
At midnight, yeah.
Yeah, but then there's other ones that are just upset because you have a light over your garage and now I can't sleep with my blind open. Sorry.
Sorry.
Close your blind.
All right, anything else? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, um, gentlemen, do we have anything to discuss?
Kind of. Um, today, Thursday, um, we need to discuss. What we're gonna do with landfill contract offer and if we're just gonna let it die. Um, my personal opinion is. Um, counteroffer with what? Is not chunking out pieces of our cake.
Right, here's, here's my six versions that I'll.
Copy over here.
I have, I've trying to come up with something that's.
Not killing the cat?
Yeah, well, and I would say I am. Concerned.
Do you wanna talk about it today?
Uh, it's Thursday'd be better, I think, as far as, I'm still crunching some numbers.
So that's kinda what I was thinking.
So we can make sure we have some time on Thursday.
Well, we'll do it after. So I just wanted to make sure I came prepared for that and if you need copies. I do wanna bring up again that. It is another budget season. And I still would like to see the uh, old Public Works building under a lease agreement. Uh, hopefully you can look at those pictures and give me an idea by the end of the day, so I know where we're going. Uh, that's all I have.
Should've had that conversation when they were sitting in.
I've mentioned it three or four times over the year, I don't. Said my piece.
I think we've.
Unless the board actually says it, I don't know that it'll get done. I guess the way I kinda look at it is, if it would've been done. At the end of last year or early this year before they had received the funding. That the county gave them out of the landfill funds, that could've been, what, one point two million dollars that was already applied to that over this year? Um, that didn't happen because it didn't get done and now we're going into another, another budget cycle where the county might give them more money and. And that might not get applied either if it's not done in time.
But he, I still don't think you can't just apply five hundred thousand dollars to a building or whatever and say that. I think you still have to set a reasonable amount for rent.
Right, no, if you're, right, so you have two forms of agreement. You have. They're leasing this office space for X number of dollars and we're leasing that office space right now. For probation, uh, for X number of dollars and the county ends up net ahead, but in that net. Using that net ahead to pay off the building, so eventually the building becomes property of. The general fund and not copy, property of the road fund. That's, that's what I want the contract for. If we're handing you money and then in the end when we sell this building, all the money goes to the road fund.
How much is, how much is the? Juvenile, how much are we paying for the juvenile?
Nothing, it's just a wash at this point, but if you look at number of people and number of space, my, my issue isn't so much lease of the space. It's landfill funds going to the road department. Where I think eventually it would be nice if those funds was being used to. Uh, take over ownership of the building. Because what you're gonna find when you come to use that building for something else is we're going to have to pay. Public Works to put something else in that building because it is not a building, it's a road building. If we were using the landfill funds to make it now a general fund building and not a road fund building, we would then in a couple years be able to do with what we want with it. Cause it would be a general fund building.
Wouldn't the easiest thing be to? Take the five hundred dollar, five hundred thousand um, that we're giving into the road fund. And just do it as a purchase of the building, so the road fund gets the five hundred thousand?
Right, and you could do it as a purchase agreement.
That would just go into it.
Right, and that's, that's.
And it'd probably be one year, cause if you look at the.
Yeah, I mean, you'd have to, that's, there, there must be some process for, you know, valuation as far as what the asset is. So that the road fund is whole.
Made whole, but it's made whole using the landfill funds and whether that's a purchase agreement. That it's paid off in the course of one year or two year, whatever they end up having to appraise it out to be.
So does the road fund pay, road fund pay for the maintenance on the building?
Yeah, probably likely, if it's an asset of the. If it's an asset of the road fund, then the maintenance would get charged against the road fund as well, I suspect. No, I mean, I don't know, but I think that's pretty, like, it's the same, it's a, it's an asset. It's just like, we don't pay, we, the, again, it's all us, for one thing, it's not. It's, it's all, it's just that is a dedicated revenue source that those dollars have to be used. Yeah, and so. You know, can I categorically say yes, I think they do, I, I don't, I suspect so. That anything that is uh, supports those road fund assets are paid for out of the road fund, including maintenance, you know, just like the equipment.
Well, they will be here on Thursday.
Yeah, we'll have that discussion. I don't think it's, I mean, it's, I don't think it's really that hard as far as, it's just like, just convert the app, you know. It is surplus to the road fund's needs, just like, I honestly think we should be looking at other assets, whether they're a road fund or. Other stuff that we surplus. They've got some other stuff that may not, I don't know that they need them anymore and they'll should be. Those should be surplus as well, and then, but the, the proceeds have to go to the, whatever the fund that owns it.
Right, and I guess that's my thing, is we might find in five years. Or two years, we don't have a use for that building and we put it up on the market and sell it, and if we do, currently, those funds would have to go to.
They would go to the road fund.
But if we're paying for it. Uh, it then becomes county or general fund. Uh, and then when it's sold, that money goes general fund versus road fund, so since we're paying them. Now, I would assume we. Get something for a dollar.
Besides the road construction projects that we're paying for. I have no issue with it, I mean, that's, that's fine, you're.
We'll talk about it on Thursday. With the road department. Okay, you got anything else?
No, not, not right now.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, I would move that we adjourn for lunch, recess for lunch, uh, back at one o'clock.
I'll second the motion.
There's been a motion to second to recess for lunch. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Being it is one o'clock, we are going to call the regular business meeting of the Clickatack County, Board of County Commissioners to order. Uh, let the record show, all three commissioners are present. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mister Chairman, I move that we accept the business agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion.
There's been a motion to second to accept the business agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, we don't have any minutes. Um, do you have the translation on? I don't see it. Okay, next, we are going to move into public comment. Public comments will be limited to three minutes per individual. Um, and as always, the remaining time will be left for responses from the Board of County Commissioners. So it's more of a comment than a back and forth. Uh, we will begin as always in the room. Um, if somebody has a public comment, come forward, please give us your name and where you're from and I will get done.
Ken McKeon, Golden Dale, Washington.
Good to see you, Ken.
Glad to see you all, especially you, Dan. You had us worried, but I knew you, you're back in the saddle again, Val.
I got my blood pressure cuff, so hopefully I uh, keep my stress down.
Yeah, hey, uh, I'm going through the agenda and uh, the uh, reg- the extension uh, on. Of this meeting on the eighth. Is that gonna be uh, zoomed?
The budget part? We do budget on Thursdays and the budget part is not.
I'm talking about the workshop, budget workshop.
Yeah, Thursdays, we, we zoom Tuesdays.
Why, why don't you? Because that's a lot of information I think people would like to know. In there and. I know, I'd, I'd like to come here too, but at home I can sit there with a beer and a burger and listen to it.
I should try that.
Yeah. Uh, here. We get to share one another's uh. Social, social uh. Communication. You might put it. You never know who's gonna walk in here. With, with a, with a, with a bug. Why should I risk myself to come down here and sit with you guys for six hours? From, from nine in the morning till three, over past, past three in the afternoon. For six hours, when I can be doing it at home. And why am I even interested? Because it's, it's the way it is. You know, the, the more information people get. The happier they are. I, I mean, some people need alcohol, some people need drugs, some people need sex. I need information to be happy. And I enjoy. Looking at how our, our system works, the people that work for us. To see their faces would be great, I mean. But if, I, what's the problem with not zooming it? You don't have the money, you don't have, I, we know we got the technology. And it's a, it would be a long day, but how often would you have to do it? And so, basically, my request would be for you guys to take another look at zooming these budget meetings, especially as. It's gonna be deep, there's, I'm gonna come whether you zoom it or not. You're gonna have to look at my ugly face for six hours, sitting out here in the audience. At least I plan on it, something may come up between then and there. But anyway, oh, and Jake, I wanna thank you for zooming while you were flying the airplane. That was so cool, man. It was like being up in the air with you, yeah. And uh, so. I don't know what the problem is with zooming these budget meetings, it's just, we got the technology. There's a lot of things people would like to know. They shouldn't have to come down here and jack, cram themselves in here. To, 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 to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister McKeon, and thank you for coming in person. Next, we will go online. Is there anybody who'd like to provide public comment to the Board of County Commissioners? Please star six to unmute your phone, raise your hand, or turn your video camera on.
We'll see something real quick while you're sitting there waiting. That black book that's on that podium right there is the budget book that we're going through. And it lists everything out in it if you wanna, you gotta wire something there waiting. That's a citizen copy, so. Yep, and it's also on the county website, it's just big.
Wow, that's a lot of information in it.
Again, if there's anyone who would like to provide public comment, uh, raise your hand, star six, or turn your video on. All right, seven, two, one, one.
This is Greg Wagner with C. Last week, Mister Bardis spoke to you, as he has done for twenty months. About the need for you to address the solar issues surrounding. In the county, need for solar ordinances which would protect the county and its citizens. Yakima County Commissioners have enacted a solar moratorium to protect their citizens. You three commissioners rescinded our moratorium and have done nothing to protect the Clickatack County citizens. After rescinding the solar moratorium, Mister Soder said, I don't want to do anything to slow down the solar company plans. This statement clearly shows who he works for. Yakka Comis- Yakima Commissioners have been proactive while you remain inactive. Mister Bardis politely told you, you are not serving the public as you should be doing. He addressed your shortcomings and failures. It's obvious that you didn't hear a word he said. You refused to listen to him or anyone and have failed to take the appropriate action needed to protect the citizens of Clickatack County. Regarding the solar issue. Regardless of how a citizen speaks to you, you will do nothing. As public servants, you are derelict in your duties. Your oath requires you to discharge duties to the best of your abilities, which you have failed to do. The comprehensive plan, the county's master plan, pages sixty-six through seventy-one. States of the people, by the people, for the people, to encourage public participation in the decision-making. You have failed at this also. When an employee fails to do their job, you fire them. Why do you three commissioners still have jobs? The good citizens of Clickatack County deserve leaders who place them first and work for them. Instead of working for the solar corporations. When will you start? Thank you.
Thank you, as always, Mister Wagner. Okay, back in the room. Is there any, come on forward.
Delmar Eldred, Golden Dale, Washington. And it just amazes me that you. Last week, when you stated that you've never looked at the impact, I mean. That these renewable energies are gonna have and all the problems that they're having, we're not gonna be exempt from what's going on. I mean. You take a look at California right now. May, June, you could not buy a cat generator. You know why? Because California back orders were so horrendous, they were trying to catch up. They were the only ones getting them because. They, as Governor Newsom stated, we're gonna be into blackouts and brownouts. He's the biggest generator salesman there's ever been. And that's because they depend, so many areas that depend. On the stuff that you guys think is just fine to bring in here. I mean Benton County, Yakima County. Those commissioners took a look at what. At what the end effect was gonna be with this renewable energy and decided we need to protect this. County and the citizens, but you guys would just ignore everything. You don't take a look to see what is. What is the gonna be the future and what it the impact is gonna be with thousands of acres. Of tillable land devastated and millions of solar panels, which are gonna not last probably because they've had to reduce the quality. Because of the price it is to make them. So to make it feasible. Now we have cheaper made panels than they did before and they're they're not gonna last very long and you're full of toxic materials. And you're gonna have to find a place to put them and you have no plan for that. And if you think that these companies are gonna spend hundreds of millions of dollars. Decommission it out of their profits that they made, you're uh you live in dream world because these people are smart. They know how to dance around anything you throw at them. They they've been sued, they've been. And they they get sued for three or four million dollars. These are billion dollar companies. That's a joke. They don't care. You know, but you guys are not paying attention to what is coming down the road and what's going on, or you don't care. Or there's some kind of benefit that you're getting from it that uh is an advantage to you. And it's. One other point I want to bring up is, it looks to me like you guys are dealing with a three percent deficit on your budget. I think it's time you started looking at hiring freezes, wage freezes, and the product projects that are not high priority are not. Be canceled if they haven't been started. You guys gotta get this budget in line. You you keep going the way you're going, you're gonna bankrupt this county. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Eldred. Okay, next, we will go back online. Ms. Irving.
Technical issues. Um, well, last week you mentioned something about the texts. My name is Ruby Irving. I'm from Golden Dale. You mentioned something about the text messages that I had sent you that you hadn't responded to and you made it sound like I sent you a lot of texts. Which really isn't true considering the fact that I only texted you on April thirteenth, the day after I was terminated. And May eleventh, the day after all the news came out about the underage party at your place. So. Just just set the record clear. There weren't a lot of texts and I have no idea why you even brought it up. To uh to Greg from C's. Being fired for failing to do a job, um personally, I I take that a little personally because I didn't fail to do a job. That's not why I was terminated. And then, of course, with the uh the gentleman that just spoke, I want to say that that was a very um. That was very well thought out and actually had some information in there that. Is useful, you know, for me to to actually look at in terms of the solar farm. So I appreciate that. Thank you. I think that's pretty much it. Dan, it is good to see you up our up there on that bench because uh. You know, those hard tasks can can really just kind of end everything. So I'm happy to see that and I didn't mention it last week, so I'm mentioning it now. Anyway, thank you. You guys have a great day.
Thank you, Ms. Irving. Feedback. Okay, next, back in the room. Is there anybody who'd like to provide public comment? Uh, today? All right, back online. Is there anybody who online? Ms. Baske.
Good afternoon. This is Sherry. I'd like to follow. I would first like to thank Dell. For a wonderful educational. Information he's just provided you gentlemen. And again, I'm going to bring up solar ordinances for Clickatack County. We continue to educate you. We send you information. You are all educated on what's coming down the line here in Clickatack County surrounding Golden Dale specifically with the Knight Road. Project with Carriage that Commissioner Christopher has recruited himself for. And um it's. It it I think I think enough's been said how irresponsible this is of you commissioners to continue to ignore it. Dana, excuse me, Commissioner Christopher. I've heard you say you're outvoted one to two and then during the time you speak back to the citizens, if if you could enlighten us some more on what you mean by. When you say your vote is outvoted by one to two on solar ordinances and if you can give the public. Your stance on what you feel about Clickatack County. Developing and implementing solar ordinances for protection of our county such as you you've all heard other counties are doing. And you know, these projects off Knight Road have to get a conditional use permit. We've been over this. And Commissioner Anderson, you continue to tell us to trust the process, trust the process to obtain a conditional use permit. I dare ask you, have you? But onward, you say our voices will be heard. Currently, Clickatack County. Is in a lawsuit with the people fighting against under canvases conditional use permit because it's a death trap. The placement is wrong. Everything about it's wrong where it's placed. And we're fighting against our county and your our county is using taxpayer dollars to fight against us. Trying to put something in place that doesn't belong where you're trying to put it. Nobody ever said no under canvas in Clickatack. But put it where it belongs or it's safe, where it won't kill people trying to evacuate when they can't. So our voices were not heard during the CIPA. Our voices were not heard for the conditional use permit. And anybody can go back and watch those videos. And you'll see how we all were against this and we were not heard. So to tell the people to trust the process, the process doesn't work because we spoke. And we aren't heard. We have a lawsuit and we aren't heard. And one more question for Commissioner Soder. Do you plan on taking any. Position with Clickatack County after you are done with your commissioner's position? And maybe specifically, do you plan on taking the plan, the project coordinator that um planning department's been advertising for? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baske. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to provide public comment? If so, raise your hand. Turn your video on, turn your mic on. I'm not seeing anyone going once. There's anybody who'd like to provide public comment? Going twice. And a third time. Tracy, I knew somebody would jump on it.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Um, I have a question on, um, there's a couple of projects coming up that I haven't seen. Uh, in the agendas or I heard on the meetings um for the commissioner meetings um that are in Clickatack County. And my one question is why are they not um a part of the commissioner meetings? And secondly, I haven't seen one of them in the. In the public uh public um records on in the newspaper or public notices, I guess they are in the newspaper. But the first one is a slaven turtle project with under the Underwood um Underwood Conservatory. District or department and um they're doing substantial work on the property. It's a it's one of three projects that'll be going on from. Twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three uh to supposedly um give the turtles better. Uh, abilities to survive. And my question is, is why are we messing with nature? You know, I'm in my understanding, those turtles actually are not even native to. The uh Lisle area. They actually came from uh California is my understanding through um documents at the museum. Uh, but why are we spending sixty-five thousand dollars in for the first project and the others haven't been like uh. It has been discussed how much they are, but you know, and then the second project is through the Forest Service and it's. Trying to save a s- a stand of um old pine trees um and in the Major Creek area. And I also haven't heard that through the commissioners meetings and you know, I go down to that little pond over there by Major Creek and there's actually turtles in there. And they're planning on burning out an area in order to help help the pine trees survive. Uh, two questions on that is one, it's a historical area. Uh, the first house in Lisle was actually um. Right there at the Major Creek area and and Mr. Soder, you probably are aware of that. Uh, that was uh burned to learn for the fire department years and years ago. And also there's turtles in the area. So how do we know that we're not burning out their habitat? And then thirdly, you know, the pine beetle is um a very destructive. Thing for pine trees and they're surviving right now. If we expose those pine trees, are they gonna be exposed to the beetle as they aren't right now? Um, but anyway, just these projects aren't 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 put out to the public and I'm just wondering why we don't. Learn about them and um get it to have comments on them. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Tracy. Okay, one last chance. Is there anybody else who would like to provide public comment? I am not hearing anyone. Okay, would either of my seatmates like to respond?
I got one. Um, for Tracy, the two projects you mentioned with Underwood Conservation District and the other one with the Forest Services are not Clickatack County projects. We have no say over their projects of other government organizations. I'm sure they have a citizen comment. Those government organizations have a citizen comment. Area. I'm sure they have public hearings of which any residents that want to be involved in those. Uh, two topics can uh go address their concerns, but it it as it's not a Clickatack County. Operating or facilitating or coming up with these great ideas. Uh, there's also nothing I can do to tell them yes or no or stop or. Go forward or anything else that's outside of the county commissioners' control on those sort of issues. That's all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Um, actually, I'd follow up on that too, Tracy. Um, the one as far as the turtle project I had heard about just kind of through the grapevine because it's in my. Neighborhood, the the um, the other one as far as the pine trees down on the old Hewitt place, I don't, I'm not, I that's the first I've heard of it. Uh, I would echo Commissioner Christopher. These are two different government entities. They're they're not county. Uh, but they are both projects uh ostensibly are in the scenic area and they would have to go through uh scenic area permitting. Uh, there is an opportunity to, they have public comment once a month uh at the Gorge Commission meeting. I know it's on Tuesdays. It may even be today. I'm not, I'm not sure. So I would suggest, um, if you go on the. The Gorge Commission's website, it'll have the uh date of their um when their monthly meeting ends and I know they do have a like a three minute public comment period. And you can also look in their agenda or their past agendas to see where both of these projects should have been discussed at some point. Uh, they were not discussed with us. You know, um. Uh, budget impacts as far at first off, I guess, Mr. Um, Mr. Eldred, I'm not sure when you said we spoke about that we have not looked at impacts. That that was we saying that we had never looked at the impacts of solar?
Mr. Anderson, last week.
Okay.
No, I've never looked at the impact. Because I can't believe you have either.
Well, just just so that I set the record straight as far as. Over two years ago or about two years ago, when we had the first project that was proposed to be constructed in Clickatack County, I did actually go. We had none of them uh of scale in Washington State. I did go. Set up a meeting to go over to look at a large scale, actually two large scale projects in Eastern Oregon, which we then later. After the first of the year, when we had a new board members, we again went out and toured those, asked questions of stuff. So to say that we have not actually tried to educate ourselves as to what a solar, a working solar farm looks like, what its impacts are. What it looks like in the community, that's that's not accurate. We have and we did, we may not agree. On the impacts and what those, you know, we obviously have arrived at different, different.
Let's just, nine Walmarts. Solar panels have burned up. Why? Because the wiring is not able, the the wiring is not what it's supposed to be. And that's what you're buying today is those same cheap panels that are having trouble. Nine Walmart have burned up because of that.
Sir, sir, this is again, this is not, I I I am, this is my time to talk. As far as there is, how many, I just want to ask you, you likely drove here today in a in a vehicle. If you or unless you walked, I doubt that, but you probably drove here in a vehicle that has, it's either gas or diesel. How many car fires were there in the last year in the United States? Probably many. I I don't know the number and I maybe there was, but I suspect it's not none. I watched one across the river. Just last week on Interstate eighty-four that shut the and it was a, it was a vehicle that had a problem and it caught on fire and burned up, shut the whole freeway down. No technology is without some risk. It's all about. It's about managing those risks to make it to mitigate things to a uh an acceptable level. And so you can always pull examples of same with lithium ion batteries. Yeah, they are you, we need to be careful with them. We are all using technology that they have from time to time. There are problems with those if they are not used properly, if they are mishandled, if they are not used. Everything it, everything inherently can be dangerous.
You're talking about individual accidents. I'm talking about potential disaster. I mean, yeah, I mean, thermal, you talk about these batteries that you guys have. That's like comparing a a fireplace to the sun compared to these huge.
And again, we have no, just just for the record, we have no battery storage facilities in Clickatack County. We we may, they may propose one and that will be the time that we would look at what are those impacts. And to the, sir, this is my opportunity and the chair is gonna gavel me down in a second anyway. As to, you know, solar ordinances and protecting the citizens, we have a difference of opinion that the citizens are not being protected now. We have ordinances to address lots of different projects, including solar projects. But my que- my question to the the same folks that we have every week is. Can you envision a solar ordinance that actually allowed industrial scale solar in Clickatack County?
Sure. You put, you don't put it where it's tillable land. You have, you have property.
Okay, so those are, so if you you would be okay with large scale industrial solar as long as it is not on.
I would, uh, that's up to, if they wanna, if they wanna put it out there on the fourteen, on those rocky hills, that's fine with me. I would, that'd be fine with me. on those rocky hills, that's fine with me, that would, that'd be fine with me.
So do you think the most important thing is that the land, if it's agricultural land, tillable land should be no solar farms until, if that's the primary?
Right.
Decision? Okay. Okay, I'm, I've used enough of my time, thank you. Excuse me.
But could I ask you one question? Where do, where are the solar ordinances that you're talking about? I can't buy it. You have ordinances on solar, but I.
We have ordinances that cover multiple things, including solar. We don't have ordinance, we don't have industry-specific ordinances on lots of things. That doesn't mean there are not ordinances that regulate how those uses can, can or cannot be used in Clickatad County.
Can I?
Yes.
This is going to apply to solar. And are they, because I, I'm trying to research this to find out.
I, I have a separate question if you're willing to answer it, because your, your information there about putting them on the hill, that, that, that's good knowledge for me. Um, so you, you, your take is you want to protect tillable agricultural land. Is that even from development? No subdivisions, no breaking them up and putting houses on it? Or is it only when it comes to wind and solar to protect the total land?
Whether, when it comes to, you're completely devastating a property that'll be, these things, right, these things they're building now got 10, 12 years of death. These new ones that are coming up, they're junk. And they're unsubstantial, they don't produce enough electricity to provide anything. And you, and, but you're destroying, but you're destroying thousands of acres of land.
There's a big lot south of town that is looking at subdividing, it's tillable acres now. Um, they're looking at subdividing and putting a development on it. Um, yeah, I've heard rumor about a solar plant across the highway from there. Are, are you talking about protecting ag land, period, or only from green energy? You're okay with the development on it?
Well, if it's a subdivision, you're bringing something into this county that's going to be a benefit. And you're gonna, these people are going to produce a, an economy, they're going to pay taxes. You're putting in solar that's got a depreciation value that's going to probably deplete in ten years. We're getting nothing out of it.
All right, that helps me, thank you.
I, it's a slight day, so. Mr. Eldred, before you leave, do you want to hear any other responses? I haven't responded, so, I mean. Oh, guess not. Mr. McKeon, why not? We're, we're in the Twilight Zone.
Uh, it seems, it seems to me that it would be the benefit of the county to go ahead and zoom these, uh, workshops, because then you have an electronic record of what people said. I, I, you'd probably go ahead and record them anyway, but you're not.
No, they're not recording.
They're not.
The cost of recording in the space on the internet, um, in the data in the cloud, we have to keep everything for seven years. Creation of public records, uh, it, the cost.
The cost.
Um, of storing the data was the reason we chose not to.
Oh, is that right? Wow, that's kind of like, uh, kind of like, uh, shocking to me because here we have all this technology and we can't even afford to use it, huh?
Or you can use it, it would just be an expense.
Yeah.
We're trying to manage the budget, so it's one.
Yeah. Oh my God, that thing is just mind-blowing. Okay, well, I guess I got my answer, thank you.
All right, well, since everybody left, maybe I don't, shouldn't use my. Oh, he actually said it. Okay, uh, Mr. McKeon, you've got the answer for my seatmates. Um, in terms of Mr. Wagner, um, I did not hear Mr. Barta last week say that we are not serving the public. I have never heard Mr. Barta make, uh, disparaging or any type of comments that were, uh, defamatory in any way. Um, so you might want to go back and check the recording to make sure that's what he said. Um, but those were the words that I didn't hear him say, uh, according to what you're saying. Um, and I think that all three of us discharge our duties to the best of our abilities. Uh, just because we disagree does not mean that we don't care, does not mean that we don't spend our time and look into the things that you've brought up. Multiple of the things that you've brought up, we have looked into and we have been fixing, uh, whether it's fees, um, and, or how we assess, um, uh, charging everyone for the time that, that county, um, uh, duties are exercised on. About the only thing that we don't charge for is public records request, um, as of, uh, as soon as we adopt these new fee schedules. Uh, there is public decision-making in any process. Um, especially when it goes through the legislative or quasi-judicial process. Uh, when Ms. Bosque says that we spoke and you didn't listen. Uh, when you speak and you're, you're commenting on anything to do with, um, planning or, uh, mitigated determinations of non-significance or even EISs, which I don't believe you've commented on yet. We are required to respond to those comments. Um, if those comments lead to questions that we cannot respond to, we are authorized to go out and spend more money finding the answers to those comments. Now, when the decision is made or when, uh, the, um, experts, whether it's a fire department chief or whether it's, um, somebody who works as an archaeologist comes up with their determination when it comes to these projects that you say people are dangerous and deadly and whatever else you're, you're, you're pointing at on that given day. Um, we look to the experts for their advice and their determination when it comes to these things. Um, with regards to one of those, um, uh, projects that you were speaking towards, that was not even determined by the Board of County Commissioners. That was determined by a hearings examiner who's a land use attorney, who does this all day, every day, who takes, who's in essence, works much like a judge, who takes all of the information in and makes decisions based on that. Not based on feelings, but based on facts and based on the expert testimony. Um, Mr. Eldred, um, I don't know if I, well, you're not in here, so you can't respond now. Uh, the way it was put that we have not looked into these impacts, uh, like Commissioner Sodder said, I have been to multiple of these projects, I've looked at them from the air, I've flown over them, I've looked at, uh, how close they are to neighbors in three or four different states now. I actually do do my research, I actually do look to see, uh, what negative impacts and harms and damages are being, occurring. I do ask those hard questions about whether the neighbor's property values are declining, um, and what we can find by that. That is, that is part of our job to look into these things. Um, and yes, um, we do look into these things. Now with regard to the statement on, uh, blackouts and brownouts and everything, um, I don't know if everyone's aware, but Washington and Oregon both decided that we're not going to be selling, uh, vehicles that have combustible engines in another 13 years. Forty percent of the total energy we use comes from, in the United States, comes from oil and gas. That means in Washington State, forty percent of our energy is going to have to come from alternative means. And I promise you, this is not going to be from coal. Um, this is not going to be from natural gas, um, even though I think it would need to be from natural gas in order to match it. But when you look at, uh, what our state is, is and is not permitting, they are running gung-ho towards all things green energy. And that isn't just our state, that's our federal government as well, if you look at the legislation that was recently passed. I know I'm just a very, very small wheel in this very large cog that is being steamrolled over the top of us. Do I think that, uh, it is logical, rational, or at all possible to redesign an entire grid to run on only electricity and not fuels or oil or fossil fuels in the next 12 years? No, I don't think, anything's possible. But do I think that it's practical, rational, or reasonable, um, to expect our PUD to be able to handle forty percent more power on every one of their lines, which some of them are close to being tapped already? I don't think that is, uh, a, a healthy expectation. But when it comes to how are we going to do this? Well, the answer is pump storage and creating batteries that are not lithium ion. Um, I've always said that I am in favor of this pump storage plant before solar was even planned in this county. Why? Because we have windmills and windmills don't blow all the time. But, but the pump storage project is a great way to store that energy from those windmills. Do I see another dam being built on the Columbia River? Absolutely not. I hear they're trying to take them out, in fact. But we have, and this is the supply-demand equation, we have demand for energy. That demand is going to continue to rise. We have done everything we can as a nation in term to be, in terms of becoming more efficient. Uh, we spent the last 20 years working on efficiency. And now it's stat on that backside of that curb. Am I in favor of, you know, small-scale nuclear reactors, um, using today's technology? Absolutely. Do I want to see them in my backyard? Probably not, but nobody ever does. Do you remember the Whoops projects? I mean, come on. Whoops was Whoops. Sorry, Whoops, thank you. Okay, moving on, uh, well, they would have all worked. Uh, Ms. Bosque.
Commissioner Anderson, will you allow me to clarify something that you've already stated?
Why not, since we're in the Twilight Zone?
Yes. Okay, so you stated that our county relies on expert testimony when allowing, um, or when approving conditional use permit. And you took example of our fire district chief out here, and I'd like to clarify, it is on video, that our fire chief testified as a lay witness. And during his testimony, he said he was not qualified to approve an evacuation, um, of an evacuation plan for the undercanvass project, which I would have guessed he's not qualified for any evacuation determination. So I would like to clarify that he was not an expert with witness. He classified himself as not being one and he cannot approve that evacuation plan that is missing from undercanvass's application. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bosque, but again, we are not getting into the details on any projects, um, because as it was clearly stated, that project did not come before the Board of County Commissioners. And I believe that there is reams of, of documents with regards to that project that the, uh, hearings examiner looked at. And again, I was recused, so I have nothing I can add to that. Uh, Tracy, um, I would go to the, uh, Columbia River Gorge Commission for all of your answers to your questions with regards to anything that happens within the Columbia River Gorge National Scenic Area. Um, or you can contact Tova Tillinghast with the Underwood Conservation District. Um, I have been contacted by neighbors about the turtle project, uh, with questions, um, about, you know, what that, that enhancement will do to their property. I will say though, that wildlife enhancement projects are normal. They are something that happens all throughout Clickatad County, whether it is the fish recovery funding dollars that we Clickatad County, um, uh, manage, or whether it's, uh, CRM or CRP grounds that are set aside for, um, uh, habitat conservation. And finally, I would say that when it comes to, um, where to cite solar and other green energy projects. Tillable ground, which could be the CRP ground, which could be ground that is currently being tilled, which could be fallow ground, which could be usually the flattest, best available ground for any development. Usually houses go on there, um, in most places. Um, we are always in this battle between uses, conflicting uses of property. And, and while I think that, yes, it would be great to put solar panels on the steep hillsides, um, they're above the old, uh, aluminum smelter site. Uh, I wouldn't sign up to be the guy criming over those rattlesnake rocks to go do it. And I don't think you could find it to be profitable in any way once so ever. Um, I do have concerns when it comes to solar, when I went out there and looked at the amount of grading that occurs when they actually put those in the ground, um, which I hope in EIS, when an EIS is ever done, is going to look into thoroughly about the amount of, of grading that occurs and the total number of cubic yards that are moved. Uh, but when it comes to it, whether, whether you're growing crops or you're, you're dealing with solar, you're still farming one thing and that's the sun. You're farming solar energy. And solar panels, you're, the only thing you're not farming that crops require is water. But otherwise, you're, you're pretty much farming the sun. And, and when it comes to that distinction on where, I have always drawn the line, um, and what Oregon has done, because I have looked into it. It is on, um, farmlands of statewide significance. It is on the highest farmland with deep soil that is, that is rich and available for growth. Um, that's where I draw the soil. I don't like to ever see irrigated ag land be removed from irrigation. Um, I don't like to see, um, you know, the highest quality, uh, ground that may be irrigated or not being used. Um, I like to see things occur, whether it's wind or solar, on your lowest-quality farm ground. Um, what happens on the backside of that is if you say, well, you're going to pick the poorest of poor soils, well, a lot of that land has already been set aside under the Conservation Reserve Program, as well as for other wildlife endangered species. Because the other thing is, is anything that's tillable ground, the solar panels usually don't have to have, pay Department of Fish and Wildlife mitigation for that. And so there's always, uh, a balancing act on where it can and cannot occur, whether it's solar pump storage or anything else. Honestly, we talk about solar because it's been being talked about for so long. But whether it's solar or it's a, it's a, another calpine plant, um, you're always trying to weigh the uses and what's best for the public. And with that, I think I've used, uh, more than enough time of mine.
Comment to add, you pretty much hit everything on the head. But there was one comment about solar being subsidized by the federal government. Um, and farmland is better. Um, I would encourage those same people that made that argument to maybe go look at, see how much farmland is subsidized by the federal government, uh, and you might be shocked at, um, at what you actually find, but farms and farmland and cattle and wheat and corn and everything else is very heavily subsidized by the federal government. I'm not saying that that's wrong or right, but I'm not saying that solar being subsidized is wrong or right either.
Okay, with that, we are going to close public comment unless I like to have one last.
Oh, no. We could go all day, but.
Eh, well. Good, glad you're healing well. All right, public comment is now closed. We are going to move into a public meeting to consider the boundary approval, approval of the boundary line adjustment, BLA 2022-07. And I will say while you're walking up here, thank you for everyone for your public comments. Um, thank you for the time you spend, uh, looking at the budget. Thank you for asking questions. Yes, ma'am.
This boundary line adjustment, BLA 2022-07 is a proposal to adjust the common property line between parcels 05152716160400 and 05152716160300 off of Pine Forest Road. The proposed boundary line adjustment is located within a portion of Section 27, Township 5 North, Range 15 East, Willamette, Meridian, Clickatad County, Washington and Golden Dale vicinity. The administrative review has been completed and signatures have been obtained from the Road Department, the Treasurers Department, the Health Department and Planning Department. All conditions attached to the preliminary approval have been met. Uh, if the board finds it in the public's interest to approve this boundary line adjustment, a motion will need to be granted for final approval, BLA 2022-07.
Did any of my seatmates have any questions? Pretty straightforward. If none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion approving boundary line adjustment 20, 2022-07, the applicant's, uh, Lawton Creek LLC.
There's been a motion in a second to approve boundary line adjustment, BLA 2022-07. All those in favor? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, public meeting to approve, consider the final approval of subdivision, SUB two thousand nineteen dash zero two.
Okay, applicant is Matt Graves. Sub two thousand nineteen oh two is a proposal to create four lots from parcel oh four, ten, oh two nineteen, fifteen oh four, oh oh, formerly parcel oh four, ten, oh two seventeen, oh three, oh four, oh oh, prior to BLA twenty-nine, two oh five. What happened was he did a BLA and a subdivision simultaneously and he approved the BLA first. So it's not happening and that changed the parcel number. So that's what happened then. Anyway, the project began, okay. Um, it's up in the BZ corner vicinity. Um, the subdivision was required because it was within the five year window. The, the previous proposal was SPL twenty seventeen oh three and they came back two years later to further subdivision. The admin review of this subdivision has been completed. Signatures have been obtained from the road, health, planning and treasurer's office. All conditions of preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it's in the public's interest to approve this subdivision, a motion needs to be granted to be made, granting final approval of sub two thousand nineteen oh two. Applicant, Matt Graves.
Any questions here? Was this the first one in your memory that was a short plat that became a long plat? Or had that been ever done before?
Not to my knowledge. That may be, mean that it was.
That somebody came back within.
Well, because they have to within that four years. Uh, there, there may have been one at some point or five.
They don't happen that often.
It doesn't, yeah, they don't happen.
Because they have to jump a lot more hoops.
Hoops when it's a subdivision.
Right.
Versus a short plat.
I don't have, I mean.
No.
We already approved it. This is just the final approval because they finally did all the conditions.
Right.
Which, you know, this is the different, that's the thing that people don't understand. We continue to get accused of, you know, Mochi allowed this and this hadn't been done. Well, there's a difference between your preliminary approval and your final. Approval that some people in the, in the audience don't understand. In order to get final approval and to go into operation, you have to complete all the conditions. And this is an example of.
Right, this is the final step. So, Mr. Chairman, if you're ready then, I would make a motion to, uh, grant fi, final approval to SUB two thousand nineteen dash oh two. Uh, the applicant is Matt Graves.
I would second the motion.
There's a motion in a second to grant final approval to sub two thousand nineteen dash zero two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Anybody want to go with the consent agenda?
Uh, yeah.
Two items.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with all two items.
I'll second the motion.
Wish it was like that always.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a motion in a second to, uh, for the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Who wants to do the bills?
Not much in there either.
Excuse me. Mr. Chairman, uh, in my, I make a motion to approve accounts available warrants in the amount of three hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and fourteen cent for the date ending September sixth, two thousand and twenty-two.
I would second the motion.
There's a motion in a second to approve the bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Um, anybody have anything for board pending today?
Um, the only thing I'd say is I looked, and again, this is, you can find anything you want on the internet. So it's with a grain of salt. I was kind of curious, my statement about the vehicle fires and the, so the average, uh, number of vehicle fires in the United States is two hundred and eighty-seven thousand per year, causing an estimated four hundred and eighty deaths a year from vehicles. It is down, that was one side. A different side was, uh, the number in two thousand twenty was a hundred and eighty-one thousand vehicle fires. So, again, these are, this is existing technology that has some inherent danger associated with it.
With people sitting inside of it.
People sitting inside of them. And we all know, you know, refineries are like the most safest operating things in the world.
So, all right. Uh, is there anything else?
It's just so that we are driving comments for next week.
As I drive home. Think about how many fires there are.
Yes.
My car burns, I don't believe in you.
Yeah.
Is there anything else for the good of the order? Huh?
But I don't have anything.
Okay, well.
All right, well, Mr. Chairman, then I would make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting, uh, until nine AM on Thursday, September eighth, two thousand and twenty-two for scheduled workshops.
I would second the motion.
There's been a motion in a second to recess the meeting until September eighth at nine AM. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Thank you all for signing in. All twenty-two that was left today. We only get like three of these a year, don't we? We're just.